Make sure you can press sign in.
Great.
Doing well. You can sign first, Tina?
Yeah.
Okay, it's its clock will open this meeting of the St. Thomas and planning board. First. Item is to elect a chair for just tonight's meeting.
Correct.
We have any nominations?
Of this meeting, you said?
Yeah, this meeting.
Yes, I nominate Travis as the longest serving member on his planning board at this only time to serve a steering chair.
Sir second?
Sir second.
I'm favor, hi.
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 Congratulations.
You're in.
You're all host.
Thank you.
Like to welcome.
Denise, there's an okay, let's.
Okay, yeah. That's the planning board.
Thank you.
And Catherine back to the planning board. Is there any public comment for items not on the agenda?
I just want to comment tonight to tell you guys, been a pleasure being on playing board with you all. And I wish you much success in the future. And. Good luck. That's it.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There any other comments? Okay, two, do you want to make, well, yeah, we have some adjustments to the agenda. Number, the first. Item of old business, it won't be happening because she sold the property. And then. Number three on new business, Richard Carrasini, he does not have the stuff in, in time, so that'll be pushed to the September meeting. So do we want to go through and prove the minutes from last meeting?
You don't, you have, you have a quorum.
Travis?
Yeah.
To have a quorum for the minutes, you would have to ask me to be, for being an alternate to voting for the minutes because it's just you and Val escape.
Okay.
Then, so it's up, it's whatever you want to do.
Yeah, or would you, you know. Be a voting member?
You would be me, a voting member for the minutes, that way we could just move it along.
Yep. Somebody want to make a motion to accept the minutes from the June nineteenth meeting?
I will accept the minutes, make the motion to accept the minutes.
I second that.
There's a couple of changes because what was in the minutes package. Jim Hendricks, that meeting, he didn't sign in, so I didn't put that as a public person. And Terry just told me his wife was there as well, so Tina and Jim Hendricks need to be added to the minutes for, for break. So I'll do that. So I would just say as amended.
Yeah, is there any other comments on the minutes? It's will accept those as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I keep looking at them. I'm post. So. We'll get into old business. Number one, we're not doing, number two, status of workshop that was offered. To select board. They have. Not, they are not interested in doing workshop?
The blasting company?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So is the planning board interested in hosting a workshop where the public could be invited? To join for education?
I would propose to wait until the ordinance review committee has done some research and work. To then have the two. You know, to complement one another, having the workshop really might not be as useful as to having it when the review, you know, ordinance would be placed.
Could argue that'd be more useful to give more education previous to decisions made. For the ordinance.
I think it would rather have separate. I don't, you know, like the ordinance review committee needs to be there, we can have the blasting company.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with that, I don't think it, you know, the two aren't related. I mean, I'm kind of stuck in the middle of it.
I, I think we should have the workshop, I think it's important to educate the community. And I think maybe what we should do is if the blasting company is not interested is that we should seek, seek someone who is an expert in the area to help us work on this with this.
Yeah, they, yeah, they can be there whenever. And. They have third party. People as well that can also come that aren't.
Employees.
Customers of mine, basically.
Okay.
I mean, I would be interested in having, same thing, a geologist to understand the, the, you know, the grounds in the area so that then we can have a fair opinion of if you have a blast in this area, you know, how does it propagates and, of course.
I don't think it makes sense to try to push it to September, but would October be appropriate?
October would be better for me, I'm not going to be away most of September.
That way we can put it out for the public and then work with the blasting company on a specific date that we can hold this room.
I just asked, but you said earlier the blasting company was not interested, but.
No, no, they are.
Oh, they are?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I misunderstood.
No, no, yeah, they're.
They are interested.
It's a select.
It's a select.
Yeah, the select board was not interested in having a. Workshop.
Do you have it before our regular meeting or separate minutes?
I would be a separate night because there's a lot of information. It's, they have slideshow and videos and like there's, they're very in, in depth.
It can't be a Wednesday. Just saying, the rooms are already booked out on Wednesdays.
So would it be? Fair for you maybe to present a couple of open dates for the next meeting and then we decide at the next meeting?
Yep.
But you could put an email.
I can send an email.
Yeah, letting everybody know that we will be having a workshop in October, date will be decided. In Sep, at the September meeting.
Can we also get an agenda or itinerary of what they would have, like what they'd like to present?
Yep, I'll, yeah, I can reach out, I haven't, honestly, we haven't even talked since that last meeting, so I'll reach out and see what they have for everything and then.
Then we can decide if we want to add, add to that.
Yep. And I'll see what they have, because they have some third party. Engineers, vibration engineers, stuff that they bring in for certain things. So I'll see what they have for that and, and. I guess we can.
Yeah, we can also see who else is out there.
Get that before the September meeting.
And I believe that your comment of a geologist makes a lot of sense. Maybe get someone from University of Maine.
Yeah, they, they employ geologists and, and work with them, so that's people, they have people that they work with on, on things, so.
Well, I'm thinking, what I'm thinking is that. To maintain. Objectivity and.
I agree there.
Perceptions from the community.
Yep.
That basically, we as the planning board should complement what they have.
So who's going to reach out about that?
I'll be glad to do some homework on that, if everyone's approving them.
I'm fine with that.
My, my daughter studied geology at Bates, so I've got some insight from her, I did talk to.
Nope.
So we can look, look at some professors from Bates and you may know, maybe both of them.
So does somebody want to make a motion? All right.
Or that you go.
Okay, then I would like to make a motion that we proceed with the. Workshop for the town. Of the issue of what, what is involved with rock coring, with blasting, with, and then bringing in, planning board can take a look at experts and coordinate with your experts from the blasting companies that we have an objective presentation for the community.
And you will reach out to and try to coordinate with another.
Yes.
Yep. Just want to make that part of.
Yeah, that's fine, I'll, I'll give some homework to them.
That's a motion.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Any other discussion? I would just like to say if we, you know, I'll, I'll get my ducks in a row, try to get your ducks in a row before the September meeting. Try to email some stuff out prior to that, so everybody has a chance to look at it, if you could do this, do the same. Certainly. Other.
But to schedule the workshop in October.
Yeah, we'll schedule the September meeting for October, but if we get as much information before the September meeting, then we pretend it.
Put some lead time out.
Yep.
notifying the public that we are going to do this and.
Yeah, I think it, it doesn't, it's, doesn't benefit anybody if we try to rush it.
No, I agree, I agree.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, new business. Nisha Huffnagle? You? You want to come up? We don't think.
Oh, please, yes.
Hello.
Hi.
Go ahead and tell us about what's your, your proposal.
Well, I was driving home from Portland, spoke nothing with my daughter today, and I was like, I'm nervous, and she said, well, let's go over it. So this was the exact question she asked me, she's nine. So the name of my business is settled, tending to what remains, and I'm an end of life conversationalist and doula. The, the sort of meat and bones of my work is having intentional conversations with small groups, talking about life and living, death and dying. Doing advanced care planning, that's mostly in small groups. There is also, I'm sort of creating or starting to build a network of other practitioners in the state who are doing end of life care and, and sort of everything under the umbrella of end of life and that kind of preparation and care. And so in most cases, I will be referring people if they wanted one-on-one attending or someone to come and sit bedside with them at the end of their life, I would mostly be doing referrals. But if the right person came along and it was a good fit, then I would be, I would act as the doula in that case and help people to sort of go through the series of mental adjustments that it takes to come to the end of your life and hopefully do that in a way that feels rich and complete. And I mostly will be meeting people where they are, so I don't actually plan on, at this point, having people at my home, I just have an office there. And, but I would be curious to know if that is something that would be allowed if, if came up that there would be an appropriate time to have someone to my home, what the guidelines are around that. I don't think that that's really going to come up at this point, but looking into the future, I'd be curious about what that entail.
So basically you'd be, so you're not planning on having any employees?
No.
You're not, like, as part of people coming into your house and it would be one-on-one or one-on, maybe a small group of, you know, family or something? You're obviously not like manufacturing anything or building anything or doing anything. I think this falls under a home business more than a commercial business. Don't.
There is, yeah, nothing anticipated that could disrupt anything, you know, change anything to the environment where we are, so I don't, you know.
Well, you're not, other than potentially people leaving crying because they're upset, I don't think you're. I mean, you're not disrupting anything other than if somebody arrives.
No, but that is a dream, but not, not in my backyard, I would love to have a green cemetery somewhere close by, but that's not part of my mission today.
Wow. It's, it falls more in a need for the, the realm of consulting, healthcare consulting and mental health consulting.
Yeah.
So you're registered to the state, correct? You're licensed?
I'm certified.
Certified, very good.
I have a certification from University of Vermont.
And then you have known, and basically you're going to be HIPAA compliant?
Correct.
I don't, I don't think this is something that.
You need a performance standard to go down there?
I don't.
You don't even think it is a.
Home occupation. Are you going to have a sign advertising now in front of your house, doing your services?
I don't, I don't think so, but I guess I would, I would want more information about that if there were something prohibiting that, then I would want to know, but I, at this point, no.
Yeah.
Because if you're going to have a sign, then we need to discuss the size, the position, you know, and. He's become partial of students, I don't want to refer so forth. But if you're not going to have a sign, there, there is nothing for us to discuss really, because maybe be more.
Essentially hours of operation.
For hospice, I can, with hospice being, you know, I mean, hospice tends to sort of overlap with what you're doing.
That's right.
So if somebody is interested, would you be on a referral list?
I don't know if it would be a same business.
I, I would, mostly it's sort of.
It's, it's a, it's a, but it's like.
It does.
Most of our.
Right, you're not, you're not really running an office. Not running an office.
No.
No.
You know, it's not.
So basically your home office would be used for conversation and counseling? And then for your own record keeping?
Mostly record keeping and making copies of, you know, end of life planning finders, it's mostly just an office, I don't have intentions of having clients at my house. It's attached to our home and I have a child and a dog and a spouse and it's a very active household, so I don't at this stage, I'm not going to see anybody in our house.
Yeah.
Somewhere down the line, we may consider after having proper conversations with all of you, you know, years down the road.
Expend.
Possibly having a structure on our house where I would see clients, but I'm not at that stage yet and I'm not rushing that stage.
So right now you're not planning on having anybody at your house?
Not, not really, except on a very rare occasion, if that was the place, rather than meeting at their house, maybe if they had a partner that was bedridden and it was tender conversation and then maybe it would be a cup of tea at my house in my office. More, it's more friendly in that case, but they would be hiring me, so.
Yeah.
There's a little bit of gray area there.
It comes back to home business.
Yeah. Slowly.
Very slowly. I just don't.
Yes.
It's going to be, you know, a couple of years before you plan on really having, might make sense to wait until then and.
Yes.
Just go about your business, we can, we can run down through performance standards and there's not going to be.
I was going to say, are many of them going to apply?
Like, do you have parking, you know, in your driveway, somebody were to come to your house, you know, people who didn't have, are on the road or lack any access to anybody else, so. You know, it's one person, until you develop further, you know, I don't think we need to be concerned.
Okay. Great.
I mean, we can go, go down through them, so it's on record and then it's not going to, it's going to take a few minutes, but there's, I mean, you're not invading anybody's space or making loud noises or.
I would, I would love it even just as a normality, so I know what to expect for the next night.
Terry's, Terry's. Right.
Okay, great. We need to correct the spelling of her last name.
Yes, please.
It's E L. It's E L, not L E.
I have a, I'm looking at the application, there was. Minutes and the minutes.
But I'm happy to answer any question if anybody has questions.
Yeah, there's, there's mistakes of being Terry's name, yeah, my name spell it off. I noticed that. But I'm looking at her, on her. And if mine was on there, it definitely would be.
Yes, I, I, I always make sure.
So your clients, basically is it age or is it disease or what, what's, you know, what is, where's your patient mix?
Well, I'm really, like, my, my goal would be to have well, at each age teams, you know, on their adventure active and have people working in and or in the event. All of their doctors are in the room.
Right, I'm thinking, I'm interested. I have only one daughter and she lives across the country, so I'm essentially alone here. And, you know, I'm seeing your age.
Your age.
Everyone off line. And I know, it's. No, no, it's not. But it's like, the symptoms, we need to know where to find your business, so you're going to have to advertise. But, you know, that's part of your business plan, that's not the concern of the planning board, you know.
All right, so. If you're lock number, so we can do that later. What road are you on?
One of them is Beatty Road, one, two, three, one.
So you don't need a DOT permit? Don't need a D U P site review? I'm packing wildlife. And you own your own? You, you, it's completed to you?
Well, we, we start with Beck.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And is it? Yeah, you have more than enough land to cover what? Home standards, all right. So lighting? You choose to have it, well, you're not a camp brown, less than one. Lighting, if you choose to have it, needs to be downward facing, prevent glare. I need to get a copy of this too, after the fact. From, prevent glare from doing residential properties or public right of ways. I'm assuming you probably have a light outside your house. How much are industrial use, you're not doing any of that, how much street parking do you have?
We have at least five spaces.
Okay.
Our gravel driveway.
And, yeah, I think that would be.
No, no.
Yes, you probably have maybe a couple of vehicles at a time, if there was.
Yeah. And I, it wouldn't be more than two.
Not. Not an addiction treatment. Greetings. Is there any special additional conditions that we want to apply on to her? I don't think so. Questions? Keep on the block. Do you notice your sewer capacity? There, you obviously have a leach field. You, I mean, I'm assuming it's going to be operational, just ask it, it might be good to just put it on, if you have a plan to put it on record with us, just so it's, I mean, you're going to have added people in your home potentially, so it's just more use on your sewer, I'm sure your foot systems will capable of handling it, but it is one thing on here.
So how many gallons are in, so, I'm waiting to. Thank you.
We'll need the, the volume of what it's rated for on a daily basis. I don't think the operations need to be not visible from the road. Or fencing, landscaping? None of that's applicable? Or, what would you say your the type of services, what would you just sum it up as? Grief counseling?
Yeah.
Yeah. You're not planning on having employees?
No.
And you'd have what's like the maximum number of people you potentially have at your home for a visit?
Currently?
Like?
Three.
Two for the moon, because that really doesn't matter, three?
Yeah, I don't, I wouldn't, more than three people won't fit in the space that I have allotted for that.
You have any security lighting? Or, no, I don't think it's necessary.
I don't think it's necessary.
When do you, I mean, you pretty much plan to be available twenty-four seven, right? If somebody calls you with a problem?
Yes, but I wouldn't have people at my house twenty-four seven.
Yeah.
So what would you want your hours to be in? Do you plan on offering services on you know, holidays?
No, not, not as it stands right now.
Okay, so what would you put out there is what you want your hours, what you want your hours to be and how many, roughly how many days a year?
Oh, boy.
Again, you could literally, with this, you can literally say twenty-four seven, three sixty-five and you're still not bothering anybody.
Yeah, I mean, let's just put that.
Yeah, because, even though you're not going to work then, if you have somebody who's in near end of life and they call you, you're going to go no matter what day it is on, no matter what time.
You said five parking spaces.
But it's like, you know, to meet clients. But it's like, you know, the, to meet clients, if you have them at your house, you, you know. You can, you need that from Monday to Friday, nine to five, you know, that's easy to do, but for the complement of your services, it's essentially twenty-seven, yeah.
Thank you for, thank you for that. That's my pleasure, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Um, we don't. Does anybody feel the need to require her to have any extra lighting? And sign, do you ever plan on having a sign?
At some point, but when I'm ready for a sign, I will come back to you. And it will be a big growth spurt that I'm not even really ready to contemplate right now.
And you're not gonna be producing noises in excess of sixty-five decibels, which I think that's. Hours.
My printer is very loud.
No duck, no odors?
No.
No vibration? We're not limiting here. Access vehicular pedestrian, as far as like times. You go back to it, parking. You don't need out of driveways. Planning board, so this is, um, fire department access. I think the fire chief should go by and just.
What's that?
Fire department access. Really has to do is make sure to get a fire truck there.
Didn't get a fire truck there.
Well, it's a house, so it could already be.
Yeah, it's, it would be nothing for him to drive by and just.
Yes, confirm.
I can't imagine having that problem.
You don't do any isolation or disturbance, don't use road control or groundwater monitoring? I think, so this is maintenance and inspection of sewer, sewer sewage facilities, if you can get your plan and get it to Terry to put in with your packet, I think that's. Fine, your system's operational, right? It's, I don't think it needs to be inspected to. Really, given no. Additional requirements, so this page is. So you basically have your hours and your parking spot, and if you have lighting, this needs to be downward facing.
Great.
Well, we can get this, we'll get this clarified and then, uh, we can get you a copy of it.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you so much.
Alright, so you wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I made the motion to grant the permit stipulated my second.
Any discussion? I have no. All in favor? Alright, Marina. You don't look like Marina. I'm gonna say much clearer. I, I know. Um, alright, why don't you give us the scoop, though?
Alright, so like the, the basic rundown is, so she does horse lessons with children and son of health, but most children. Um, we've always, we have ordered our horses and, you know, actual facilities at other places, so. We finally come to the point where bringing them home is more economical than, you know, paying other places, so. We went through the process, built a small stable for our five horses and, um, now. The plan is to, uh, expand to her own riding ring, so we no longer have to trailer out to, you know, other people's riding ring, so it's all, you know, at all. And, um, she does, uh, like a day camp, so like if you have children that. Basically, it's like a daycare, but also educational, just about the basic care forces and all the things that go along with it. And, um, yeah, yeah, basically, that's the scoop of what she does and. We're just here to, you know, iron up the details of, you know, what's, you know, what needs to be done, is, you know, working, not working.
What's the age difference of the children?
Uh, I think she's like basically six years old, we, um, um, you know, being able to walk off. That, you know, that, you know, they can do, they can let you know if they need to do any of the things that children need to do.
Are there, are there state requirements that you have to meet with respect to running a day camp?
Um, I do not believe so. I know she carries her own insurance that covers if anything were to happen to said children. Um, on, on property and everything, as far as like licensing or requirements, I don't think there are any there.
I'd like to get that clarified. My, my wife ran a day camp for six hundred children.
Okay, yep, um, that can be, you know, clarified and, you know.
Also, I would.
I was thinking that the day camp, if you operate more than four days a week, but, um. We should give that.
Let's just clarify it.
Yeah, she does three, but I think it's four and five.
Also, maybe to protect the town, if we can get a certificate of insurance.
We have a.
I didn't see it.
Good, before, before we continue, and what is your relationship to Marina?
Uh, and her boyfriend, and my parents are leasing her property.
Okay.
All this has been done on.
Thank you for the clarification.
Just, is everybody familiar with where this is?
Yeah.
Yes.
So their neighbors are like cows and field.
Correct, it's all farm out there, yes.
Yes.
And you already have, you already have one structure for five horses, or towards the fold more?
Uh, no, five horses.
Five horses, and you're gonna add a ring?
Uh, we are working on a ring, yes.
Sand, uh.
Yeah, sand.
Rubber underneath or just no sand?
Just, uh, earth and sand.
Earth, yeah, very good. And then how are you gonna handle the horse manure?
That was my question.
Um, so we currently are, we're putting in a compost pile, so for once, I think horse manure has to age a certain amount of times before it's. Usable for actual compost, uh, so we're currently just putting it in a designated location, um, for compostable.
And what are you gonna do for test control for the ring?
Uh, she's gonna have a water tank.
Water sprayer?
Yeah, well, set what we said.
Very good.
And I've used the limited already, the, uh, area, which is, uh, there is notice that you have a river stream coming right to the property lawn. And there are conditions as to how far from the watering.
Yeah, there's D U P, so, um, supposed to be seventy-five feet set off of protecting natural resource.
Yep.
River or stream. Streams are actually the most protected in the state. Um, protected resource, so just, you know, with the notes on the map there, there's a river stream.
What comes to the map anyway?
Your activity should be, structures have to be seventy-five feet away from that.
Yeah, so, so what we, the structure that's there, we just added off at twenty-five feet. Um, I, you say I came and did all the, you know, stuff with the, uh, for building grain to whatnot for that. Um, as far as the stream, we are well over a hundred feet from any water contact. Um, just going through, like, looking online for, like, the, uh, watershed map type deals, when you go online. Um, where we, where we're doing the ring is not on any of the wetlands or any of the water cable there. Because that was one thing that was a big concern on our location was, was the watershed, the wetland.
Yep, yeah, just make sure, um. Even like activities are supposed to be seventy-five feet away, you know, sort of disturbance horses walking around. Any of that for, um, you know, soil erosion gets in those streams and makes it out a lot of ways and stuff, so I would just, I would just.
Okay, and so I guess the question I have about that is, so the said marked stream is dry. Eighty percent of the year is, it's still last year's stream, just even though.
If you, um, I mean, you, you can call D U P and they can have somebody come down or. I mean, if you're confident, you can go with it, but I've, you know, I've dealt with it with my business several times.
Right.
The best way to get, to deal with the D U P is befriend them and have them come down and work.
The way you should.
Exactly, um.
I mean, the question is, the horse system, you know, you don't want to introduce any acidity or change the pH of the area and the manure, you know, will be very acidic and so forth.
Right.
Is it, uh, I'm assuming your property is at an elevated level to where the stream is?
Yes.
Um, I mean, it might make sense to put like an erosion control arm to prevent, because. Uh, I'm familiar with horses and it's always disturb, like the, the hor, the ground they walk on is always disturbed.
Right, right.
It's never, uh.
Currently the barn has horse five stalls.
Yep.
And they are your horses?
Yep.
So you have no room, like if somebody wanted to board or something, these things, you don't allow for that?
Correct, they are all our personal horses.
Okay.
Are you planning on doing any voiding?
Um, no, that won't be in the talks until we, you know, approach building another barn, so not in the near future.
And it indoor ring, so it becomes more expensive.
Pretty much, exactly, right. Once, once we get there, but as of now, it's all on surgical horses and, and, um, yeah, so there's no more room for, for boarding or.
How many spots was your car fees on?
Um, if I had to put a number on it, you could probably fit twenty to thirty vehicles there. It, it's very open. It's a lot, so.
And what is the shop?
Uh, it's just my, it's my parents' old barn. My dad keeps his motorcycle and lawnmowers and stuff in it.
But is, is it a store or is it a workshop?
Uh, it would be more storage shed.
Storage shed, very.
There's no work that gets done in it, other than, you know, change the oil in the barn.
Where, where do you keep the saddles and, and stuff?
Uh, she keeps them right in her horse trailer. She has a trailer that has the tech room, right?
Okay, so the trailer's the tech room, very good.
And what, what are like operational hours?
Uh, her, 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 like, would be, you know, eight to three, you know, pretty much peak daytime hours.
Seven days a week.
Uh, more so, um, more so four days a week, but with the riding lessons, that'll be more of like, you know, weekend heavy things. So it'll be like less hours during the weekdays, and then Saturdays and Sundays will be, you know, more use, obviously, because when kids are in school and everything, they'll be, you know, more available.
The house is there right now?
Yep.
Okay, they have been there since when?
Um, I would say this beginning of this, like, summer, so a few months now.
And are you planning to serve food?
No.
Now, so children will bring their own food?
Yeah, they, they bring their own lunches and everything, and then she does have a porta potty offsite, so her, you know, bathroom stuff.
And the state may re- require some type of refrigeration, so check into that.
Okay. They, they, you say there is a refrigerator and refrigerator.
A lot of times it's basically a bit cooler with ice.
Yeah.
Just do what this, just meet the state requirements, that's all. And you are insured, I assume.
Yes, you are.
Yep.
Yeah, you got it right, yeah. Very good.
I don't see what the coverage amount is on the policy. All I see is that the policy changes are adding an additional insured. But I'm wondering what the amount of coverage.
Oh, that, that's the camp policy, that's, um, her policy, I think it's a million.
Okay.
It's personal coverage, personal liability?
Yep, it's for her teaching.
Does she have like a, is she a D V A or, I don't know, there's, I'll stick to those, the hidden horizon name?
No, she just operates under her name.
Okay.
This might ask for, you know, some kind of insurance, but would list it with all of the coverages that were applicable.
Does she have any I N number or is she doing this, the D V P, D V A? Is, is doing business as persons an LLC?
Um, she is doing business as herself, so like I think a check would be written to her, throw the name Marina, going not to, uh, to us, to hit horizon.
Okay.
Really, the only question marks are, I mean, state requirements.
Since I raised my hand, um, how many children each day?
Um, she's usually five or less.
Five or less.
Um, because I think so, she, you know, five is like her number for, doesn't want no more, because that's, you know, a manageable, safe number for her.
And does her license for, is the daycare allow for five, for five children?
I'm not certain of that, that could be, you know, clarified.
That's something that needs to be, because not just with writing, but there are rules and regulations for daycare centers. And how many kids you have.
There's.
And so, and there's also, if you have to have employees, because one person can't handle five people.
Okay. These, yeah, we can absolutely clarify all these.
Safe has rules, I know.
Yes.
You, you raised a good point. You used the word daycare versus day camp. Is it gonna be a day camp or is it gonna be a daycare center?
It's a day camp.
Day camp, so do, so my, just do not say daycare.
Okay.
Yeah, the difference between the day camp and daycare, I imagine.
You're gonna have two different sets of regulations, alright, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's our biggest is, uh, finding out exactly what the state regulations are in place and then talking to her directly.
Yep.
So I think it makes sense to, to table it till.
Insurance.
Next month.
Qualification on the, on the insurance, was actually covered or what?
Well, I think it'd make sense to see what the state requires and then just.
That comes from the background, so I.
Yeah, hold that as, as a condition of the permit, that she meets the state standards once she finds out what those are, or state minimums. Somebody wanna make a motion?
Hi, I would like to make a motion that we table this to the next meeting.
And see all the insurance information before, you know.
Collect the initial information and present it.
Alright, yeah, state, state requirement, um, as far as how many people. State requirements as far as insurance, co, insurance coverage, um. We don't need the certificate of insurance, we just hold you liable to meet that standard.
Okay.
So. Yep. Uh, anymore? Any discussion?
You want Marina here president the next?
Yes.
Since I wasn't in, oh shit, so I'm just asking.
Thank you.
So I can, you have any problem if I just add it to the motion?
I do not have a problem. I stand corrected.
I'm in the most.
Um, any more discussion? Alright, um, all in favor?
Alright.
For you, then hopefully her.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Third, uh. Third Thursday, Thurs- Thursday of the month.
Let's see, I can open.
Yep. And the last item that we're gonna talk about on new business is, uh. Thanking Herb Curtis for his years of dedication to the planning board. And you will be missed. We have a lot to learn.
Go ahead.
I asked for this to be on the agenda, because Herb has been a long time chair of the planning board, he serves as. Alan has volunteered, and I didn't want you to just not be thanked personally.
Okay.
And, and you've done a lot, and I just think that her experience and their knowledge, you know, the town's losing that, and I just wanted to say thank you.
I appreciate it. I appreciate your time, Chris.
And from me, um, made a little comment to Terry earlier, but I hope that whoever. Builds this position full-time, you know, can reach out to you and get a little bit of insight on. Their focus, and some other things, if you're willing to do that.
Okay. Well, I'll make time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and so next meeting. We need to establish any action, the setting up. Um, or setting a date for the workshop. Which I will get as much information as I can. And to everybody, you will work on, I'm working on a third-party geologist. Then hopefully Terry can get us a couple dates that the rooms open. In October, and you'll pick from there, and then you'll send an email out to the town, letting them know that we will have the workshop in October, and we'll setting a date for that at the. Every kind of board meeting. Any other action items that anybody wants to speak on? Go for it.
Um, I wanted to, Terry doesn't know, and I feel bad with. With my schedule for the rest of the fall, I'm gonna write a, a letter to resign as an alternate and not take minutes anymore. I'm gonna finish the minutes for this meeting, and no more. Because my schedule doesn't accommodate it, and I did it for Terry to help her out, but. There's other things in life.
I'll make a motion to not accept that. So, we want, I would like to thank you very much, because you have not only, you said helped Terry out, but you've taken the minutes, and you've been gracious, and you've also. Held us accountable on multiple things. Um, over the time you've been here, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else?
Uh, action item for September is select a chair.
Correct.
For hopefully more than the September meeting.
I will ever, and I mentioned before, I will not be able to attend the September meeting.
So, is everybody good?
Yep.
So at seven? Nope, six?
Forty-nine.
Six forty-nine, without objection.
We'll call it six forty-nine.
Without objection.
We will adjourn the meeting.
Sure.
Very good.